Yes.
Okay, I got a screen here. Okay. Alrighty, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Woodbury zoning board of appeals meeting. Let's stand for the pledge, even though we don't have a flag, we can still do the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is the Woodbury zoning board of appeals meeting. We meet the second Wednesday of every month. Our next meeting will be in February on February ninth, probably Zoom also, given the COVID conditions. I'd like to introduce the board this time. I don't know how your screen looks, so I'm gonna go in order of what I have here. We have Mr. Andrew Zumas. You want to raise your hand, Andrew? Thank you. Mr. Kevin Abrams, Mr. Craig Brady, and myself, Karen Unger. We have our attorney, Kelly Naughton, and our recording secretary, Jessica McLennan. She's hiding tonight. Okay. Let's look at the agenda. Alright. We don't. No executive session for this meeting, correct? Okay, gotcha. Alright. Minutes. Has everyone read the minutes from December eighth?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Motion.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Karen, I was not on last month's meeting, if that matters.
No, it doesn't matter as long as you've read the minutes.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, we have no new business, but we do have action on decisions. The first one is Levy. Review decision requesting variances for the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling that was destroyed by fire from Village Code Sections three ten dash seven, three ten dash forty-three, and three ten dash forty-three point one. Property located at nine 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 Route thirty-two, Highland Mills, Section two oh one, Block one, Lot number twenty. We closed the public hearing. We have a decision. Several pages of facts and findings, and the conclusion is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussions, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested area variances described and discussed above, to the extent noted above, conditioned on the applicant receiving all necessary permits from the building department, and hereby finds that the variance as granted are the minimum variances necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. For Section A three sixteen dash nine, letter E of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if the building permit is not obtained by the applicant within one hundred eighty days from the date of final subdivision approval by the planning board. The board may extend this time for one additional period of ninety days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion. We accept the. We approve the decision.
Okay, and do I have a second? Oh, Craig, okay. So I'll do, I'll poll the members. Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Kevin?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So Mr. Levy gets his variances. I believe I saw his name here somewhere. Oh, there you are. Okay, did you hear the the decision, Mr. Levy? Okay.
Yes, madam.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Alright, next on the agenda. Okay, well, we have a change in the agenda. We have two applicants who have requested adjournment till next month. That is Beer World and Fourteen Castleton Drive LLC. Do I need to read the public hearing notice and ask anyone, Kelly, if we're waiting till next month?
I know, I would just say to let everybody know that they're being moved to next month, but to make a motion to adjourn it to those deadlines.
Okay.
Um, I do just want to let Mr. Levy know that this decision will be signed by the chairwoman and will be given to the building department. So all you need to do is reach out to the building department tomorrow, and I know you were concerned about the roof and things like that, so you can just contact them.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Clear.
I missed something there.
It was.
Do I have a motion to move to adjourn the Beer World public hearing to the February meeting?
Motion.
Second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I also need a motion to adjourn the Fourteen Castleton Drive LLC public hearing to the February meeting. Do I have a motion for that, Craig?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Kevin, alright, all in, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we'll move on to the public hearings. The first one on the agenda for this evening is Woodbury Chicken LLC public hearing requesting variances for the construction of a Popeyes restaurant from Village Code Sections three ten dash twenty-seven and Chapter three ten, Attachment eleven, relative to the number and size of signs. Said property is located in the Ivy zoning district at twenty Center Drive in Central Valley is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section two two five, Block three, Lot one point one two. Do we, is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am here on behalf of the applicant, Woodbury Chicken LLC. I'm just gonna start, start us off with just a quick overview. I'm also joined by our engineer, Matthew Bersh, and our architect, Robert Grimaldi.
Okay, I see everybody. Everybody's little square.
Yeah. We're all here, everyone has their names on their little squares, so that's helpful. So we are here tonight to request relief from the zoning code. We are constructing a two thousand four hundred and fifty-four square foot Popeyes restaurant in the Woodbury Center Business Park. It will be replacing the existing Pizzeria Uno building. We're going to demolish that and rebuild. The property is zoned in the industrial business district. We require three variances. Our first variance that we require is for the landscaping area. The code requires that you have a minimum landscape area of at least five feet. There's a portion of our landscape area that runs across the front of the building that is less than five feet. The minimum amount is zero feet in some areas near the door. And we'll show, we have pictures of that as well. Our second variance is a variance to install four wall signs where the Village Code only allows you to install one wall sign. And our third variance is relief from the size requirement where Village Code requires that the size cannot exceed ten percent of the wall area. We have one sign that's the Love That Chicken graphic that does exceed ten percent of the wall area. And the reason that we need these variances is to provide appropriate signage to indicate where the restaurant's going to be in the shopping center. We do not have a sign on the main entrance pole. So we can only rely on our building signage. In the landscape. Yeah, oh yeah, we do not have, thank you, we do not have a sign on the pylon. Yep. And we need the variance for the landscape area because we have sidewalk that also runs across, and it's impossible to have the five-foot landscape area with the sidewalk that's required to be a certain width for ADA accessibility. So I'm gonna turn it over to our engineer, Matthew Bersh, so he can provide clear visuals to show these variances where they are and what the signage and the landscaping looks like.
Okay, I would like to interrupt for just a moment. When you talked about the landscaping in the front, we first need to determine which is the front of the building because by our code, the portion of the building that's parallel to Route thirty-two would be considered the front of the building, which is basically what you put in your, you know, your renderings. But you're saying that the front of your building is where the entrance is.
That is, that is correct. So the front, the property line, the front property line runs parallel, but the front of the building, we believe, is where the entrance is. And that's where we have the most landscaping, that's what we want to look, make look the most aesthetically pleasing, and we do have landscaping around the entire building. But we do have the most at the front entrance where we believe is the front of the building.
Okay, so do we need, how do we need to proceed with this, Kelly?
Well, so this was something that the applicant had asked in interpretation from the building inspector, but it just wasn't addressed in his response. So since the applicant's not identifying for purposes of the landscaping requirement, the front along Route thirty-two, which you noted, the board needs to make that determination as to what is the front of the building. The applicants identified. If you're looking at it from thirty-two, the side of the building, I don't know, the main entrance into the building, however you want to call it, but this board needs to make that determination as to what is the front of the building. It was kind of a silent interpretation request that the board needs to make in order to proceed on this.
Craig, you needed to say something?
I'm looking at the plans that were provided and on the very first one I opened up, I'm not sure what designation it has, but it shows various details, the signs, and it specifically states proposed front elevation, proposed rear elevation.
Yeah, that was my point with the.
And the front is clearly, what is stated on the plan as proposed front elevation is clearly from the other plans as well, that which faces Route thirty-two.
Correct. But we still need to make that determination, well, the interpretation.
Well, yeah, because that's, that is what's identified on their plans, but what they're requesting is that that is not the front, that the main entrance is the front. Which is not the side that faces thirty-two.
True, right.
And that's, that's, that was Craig, the basis for my whole point on that.
I can yelp, Kelly.
The door by Love That Chicken, that's the main entrance?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
And we did submit a request from the building inspector of several questions to get clarification on. He responded briefly on most of them, but did not. We had stated in our submission to him what we had deemed the front of the building. He did not dispute that in his response back to us. He did not say it was correct, but he did not say it was wrong either.
Okay. The board members have anything they would like to say to this?
So what's standard in our code and all interpretations that I can recall being involved in is that the front is that which faces the street, which has the address, right? Essentially, I'm not putting that.
I don't know if we're talking about the address, but I know that the portion of the building that's parallel to the whatever access road is there, that would be by our code, considered the front of the building.
So.
So in that case, it would be there, there. Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen. Side of the building.
Right, and I'm, I'm as I'm not sure if it makes a terrible amount of difference, what's considered front, side, or rear, unless there's a specificity in the code regarding landscaping, front versus side. I don't, I didn't see specific mention of that. So maybe we should, I don't know, would it make sense to have the the engineer walk through this plan and answer questions at this point, or do we need to decide this first, Kelly? I don't know.
No, I think that it would be good if the engineer can walk through. You might want to have the applicant submit further detail as to the request and why what they think is the front should be the front, and then you can consider that as well.
And Kelly, if I may just add, you know, part of our interpretation at the front of the buildings where the entrance is, is that the purpose behind the Village Code provision requiring the landscape is to improve the appearance of the building. And so in our view, we want the front of the building to look the best and be the most aesthetically pleasing and drawing for, for our structure and also for, you know, just how it'll look within the shopping center as well, which is why we believe it's most appropriate that the front of the building is where the entrance is, because that's really where you're gonna want to have the bulk of your landscaping.
And if you, if we decided that the front of the entrance side was the front, the left side of your building still would be short of some of the five-foot landscaping, correct? Because you have a sidewalk there?
That's correct.
But you would still need a variance for that five-foot buffer?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, do we want to, anybody else have anything on this till we you know, get the rest of the information? No? Okay, do you want to go on, Drew?
Absolutely. Well, I'll turn it over to Matt, and he can walk you through the images that we have, and I think that'll shed a little more light on this issue as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Bersh with Dynamic Engineering Consultants, and I'm the licensed professional engineer representing the applicant for this project. At this time, I'd like to introduce the aerial map exhibit to just give a brief overview of the existing site. It shows an aerial of the surrounding roadways, and I can give a brief description as well. So I've requested the share of the screen.
It obviously didn't let you. Hold on.
It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Darn straight. Alright, no, just a second.
What did we do before all this technology?
We had our plans sprawled out all over the floor next to us.
You mean like I do now?
Exactly.
I just have to find it. So give me one second.
Hey, I'd be happy going back to the seventies.
Who wouldn't?
Do you want me to proceed with something else, Kelly, while you're trying to do that?
Oh, yeah, you guys can keep talking. I just usually totally cut off the screen sharing, especially on Zoom. On WebEx, I let it go, but I just need to find the clicker. So please keep going.
Okay. Let us know when you're ready for the screen sharing. Alright, thank you. So I guess the next question that I have is, or the board has, one of the other variances you're requesting is signage. One wall sign is loud, and you're requesting four. You also ask for an interpretation for the lettering, the single lettering, whether it was a mural or it was a sign. And you also wanted an interpretation as what the wall area was, because the way you looked at it was it was the portion, everything that you could see from one side. There might be little bump outs, you know, along the way. Or is it just the section? You know, each section. So we do need to discuss that.
And the building inspector did render an interpretation that said that the Love That Chicken graphic was a sign, which is why it's included in our variance request, and then did provide some clarification about how we should go about calculating wall area for purposes of determining the permitted size for the other signage, and that is in the packet, but also Matt will be able to show you how we calculated the wall area and what the wall area is for each front, for each elevation.
Yeah, that wasn't really included.
Okay, am I good to jump back into this?
I think so. Thank you.
Okay. So this is the aerial map exhibit. It's dated one twelve twenty twenty-two. It was prepared by my office. As I noted, it, it shows the entire development as well as the surrounding roadway network. You can see the subject property is located directly in the center. It's highlighted in yellow. This, the property is known as two twenty-five dash two dash one point one two. The address is twenty Center Drive, so this would be Center Drive here on the bottom of the page. As Drew had mentioned, the subject property is located in the Ivy Industrial Business District. The overall property is a little over sixty-eight acres. On site today is an existing shopping center. It's the Woodbury Center Shopping Center. There's two main buildings, one on the top side, we'll call it, I guess we'll call it east, so north is to the left. So there's two main buildings, one on the top, and then one on the southern side, as well as three separate standalone buildings, one being the Fridays on the northeastern side, the Dunkin' on the northwestern side, and the Uno's Pizzeria on the western side. As part of the proposed development, we will be replacing the Uno's Pizzeria with a proposed Popeyes restaurant with a double drive-through. The, the, a majority of the shopping center will remain as is. All of the access points will remain, driveways will remain. It's simply going to be the Uno's area that will be disturbed and changed as part of this development. So next, I would like to introduce the site plan rendering to give a little bit better picture of what we're actually proposing. So this is the site plan rendering. It's dated one twelve twenty twenty-two. It's essentially a colorized version of our site plan and our landscaping plan. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit more so you can see this a little bit better. Again, north is to the left side of the page. We'll keep that same orientation. So in the center, you have the Popeyes restaurant. The building contains forty-two seats. It's four hundred and fifty-four square feet inclusive of an internal walk-in freezer. There's a double drive-through on the south side of the building. There are sidewalks along, I'd say probably half of the building frontage, providing access to the two front doors, one on the eastern side and one on the western side. As previously mentioned, we feel that this will be the main entrance on the western side of the building, and therefore there's parking along that side of the building as well. So there's also parking, existing parking that is to remain further to the west as well as further to the east and to the north of the development. So this is essentially right where the Uno sits. So we're just gonna be replacing that pad area. You can also see landscaping throughout this rendering. There's green space, the larger green circles are shade trees, and then there's smaller shrubs in the purple and green colors in and around, not in the building, but around the building in these open space areas. We're also providing lighting and signage, as I'll get into momentarily. As I mentioned, access to this development, and in particular, this area of the development will remain as is. And I'll bring this site plan rendering up again shortly. But I'm just gonna continue to introduce the use to you. So I'm gonna do a little bit of the architect's job here, and I wanted to show you the architect, the colorized architectural exhibit here. It is prepared by Popeyes Corporate. It is undated. As you can see, the, the top portion of the building contains a white ephist finish. The bottom two and a half feet or so contain a gray ephist finish. Above all of the windows is this teal canopy, and you'll see the same type of color usage throughout the entire architectural finish in the entire building. In the front here, where there is no door, again, this is the, the main entrance here on the side. But right here with the sign up on the top portion of the facade, and then the bottom half is cedar wood side paneling. Along the, the top edge of the facade on three of the sides are these orange downlit gooseneck lights. Some of them like the signage, others just kind of like the sidewalks and landscaping and surrounding driveways as well. On this side of the building here, there is a brick accent wall. It's a brick veneer, and it pretty, is pretty much symmetrical on the opposite side of the building. Which I can show you here. Again, symmetrical, you see the same type of finishes, canopies, the same Louisiana Kitchen seal on this side, which I'll get into momentarily. So you can see, it's pretty much the same on both sides of the building. And so I mentioned signage. I'll discuss the variance that we're requesting. You could see on this exhibit, we are proposing four separate wall-mounted signs. There's one here, this is the Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen channel letter sign. There's a Louisiana Kitchen with a chicken symbol. This is the seal. There's another one on just the other side of this facade, this little bump out. And then there's the Love That Chicken graphic. This is on the brick veneer. So on the east side, that is that's this side with the drive-through, and just going back to the site plan rendering, that's gonna be on this side of the building, the top side. There's one sign, and this is that Louisiana Kitchen seal. So we calculated the area based on the interpretation that we received and some of the the previous review letters that we were able to obtain and resolutions that we were able to obtain from the town. We calculated the facade area as just this portion of the bump out. And that was calculated as three point seven feet wide by twenty-one point eight three, eight three feet tall. So ten percent of that facade area is eight point two square feet. The seal itself is seven point one square feet, so that it is in compliance with the code. On the, the western facade, I'm sorry, which is this side of the building, again, back to the site plan rendering on the bottom side. We have that same seal, the same area calculation, so allowed is eight point two square feet, and the seal is seven point one square feet. On the brick veneer, again, we calculated just based on the brick veneer area. Doesn't include any of the other facade areas. We found that this area was twenty-three point five four feet wide by nineteen point one seven feet high, giving us an allowable sign area of forty-five point one square feet, whereas the Love That Chicken sign is forty-four point eight square feet. So again, in compliance with the ordinance. And then on the north facade.
Before you go on, if I can ask a question on the Love That Chicken?
Absolutely.
Did you, did you calculate that by the coverage of the individual letters or as effectively a square or rectangle surrounding it?
I believe we calculated it as a square, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
I, I can try to confirm that for you as well.
These calculations. Sorry, Andrew.
So you calculated as a square just on that brick facade, not on the whole wall?
That's correct.
And what were your calculations? They don't, they didn't seem.
I can.
They actually weren't there, and that's, that's what I was gonna say. One of the things that I think should be provided to the board are the actual, you know, length and height of the buildings, and the same with the signage. That way, the board can come to its own conclusion as to the ten percent. That way, the board can come to its own conclusion as to the ten percent.
So we did include this calculation within our sign chart. These are the area calculations here.
Oh, God, like I was gonna be able to see that. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was on the the site plan that we had submitted. So this was our our calculation for the allowable area. And there are details within our, the construction details in our site plan set. I do have them and I can share them.
So I saw the one that was on page fifty eight of the PDF. I did see that where you had the stuff, where you had the boxes and the size of the signs.
I do have an exhibit here that I'll go introduce momentarily. I figured it was a little bit easier to see it on the architecturals, so you can kind of see how it fits in with the facade, but.
Yeah, just looking for that sign calculation that you said, on what what page of the PDF was that on?
I don't know what page of the PDF it is, but it's bottom left corner of the plan set.
Okay.
From the the primary.
Oh, okay, I've got it.
Site plan document, that one.
That's correct.
So going back to that, then you're saying that the west signage facade, the brick is, what was your calculation? In square feet?
It was twenty three point five feet, five four feet wide by nineteen point one seven feet tall. So ten percent of that area is forty five point one square feet. So we calculated it to be approximately four hundred and fifty one square feet in area.
So I think what Andrew's getting at, I'll say the same. I I think I'll repeat what he's saying in a different way is that the, on the plan or on the rendering, it seems larger than what would be appropriate. Let's just put it that way.
If I may.
It just looks larger. Let's put it that way.
If I may.
Sure.
This is Robert Romaldi and Matt, sorry for jumping in.
I'll go for it.
This building that the picture is taking up, and this is an actual one of the test buildings that they did when they developed this new look for the building. With that also, this is one of the first elements that, first sizing of the element. If you look on the exhibit that Matthew was showing you, it is dimensioned out as seventy inches by eighty two inches. And that is also the same way it's dimensioned on my elevations. The detail on my elevations.
Okay.
So if you just wanted to do rough math of saying six foot by eight foot, you can do that multiplication. But yes, you could go back into it and, you know, five foot, excuse me, five foot ten by seven foot eight. And it'll calculate out to, as Matthew already testified to.
I think the key is your statement that the rendering is not to scale of this particular building.
The rendering is is for graphic purposes, so you could get a feel of the look and texture of the building. The dimensions that we are showing on our documents are what the true elements that are going to be built, what what is going to be built to and what we are testifying to. This is artist rendering.
Right, that the the proposed main entry elevation shows a a very different scenario where effectively the brick covers the entire pair of entrance doors and it's a lot larger. So thank you for that. That that's helpful.
Yes, it this is again, it's a, it's a artist rendering.
Yep.
Thanks, Rob.
No problem.
Okay, so those two seem to then not need variances in that context.
Those three.
Were those three, correct? The two seals, two seals and the love that chicken. So now to the Popeyes main.
Yes. So on the the north facade, we calculated this facade area as eighteen point five four. I just lost. Sorry, eighteen point five four feet by twenty one point eight three feet. Ten percent of that is forty point five square feet. The area of this sign taking a rectangle around the Popeyes and the Louisiana Kitchen channel letters is forty point nine square feet. So we're we're four tenths of a a square foot over. This is one, this is Popeyes standard signage. It just so happens to to not meet the requirement by by four tenths of a square foot, which is, is really de minimis.
And if need be, we can make the spacing between the kitchen, the Louisiana Kitchen and the Popeyes. We can shrink that by two or three inches and then that square will be reduced to fall within, but it's just the the standard that we, we go with the standard until there's a reason not to.
Your, your calculations on that Popeyes is drawing two rectangles, one around Popeyes and one around Louisiana Kitchen and adding those two together?
No, it's a a rectangle around both of them together.
And even including that, your, the dimension was how much off?
Yes. So allowed was forty point five, we're proposing forty point nine. This time, I'd like to just present some existing signage within the shopping center on the shopping center buildings as well as the the standalone uses. So this exhibit was prepared by my office. It's also dated one twelve twenty twenty two. The first sheet shows the the Dunkin' Donuts. You could see that there, there's multiple signs on the the Dunkin' Donuts. There's, there's one on the the front entrance as well as one on the drive-through facade. There's also signage on the canopies. So essentially, it's it's four signs on the Dunkin' Donuts use. The next page shows the existing Fridays. You could see they have a a large sign over top of their their main entrance. They also have a second sign on a a separate facade facing the parking lot. So they have multiple signs as well. On the the main shopping center buildings, the end caps typically have more than one sign as well. They have them on both facades facing out towards the the general public in the parking lots. So that was the the Talbets. And as well as the the Coles. I understand this, this coal sign is has since been removed, but it was replaced by Aldi. So Aldi also has two signs, both on facades facing the parking lot or the the general public. The Hampton Inn, although it's not on our property, there is a Hampton Inn sign on the the pylon sign for the the subject development. So they they do take up space on the the signage for our development. But they also have multiple signs. And the existing Uno has four signs on all four facades. Obviously, the the Uno will will be removed as part of the proposed development. We just wanted to show the fact that ultimately, the the signs on the Popeyes aren't necessarily out of character within the the entire shopping center. We think that they're they're generally consistent showing signs on the facades that face the general public, Center Drive, the parking lots. And as previously noted, we do not have space on the main pylon sign. So we are relying on our building signage in order to show the general public in the area what uses is there and what where the Popeyes is. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just gonna ask, do you know the signs that are multiple on some of these buildings? Were they prior to the zoning code or were the variances that were granted earlier?
I, I don't have an answer to that question.
And they were not, they were in existence at the time the zoning code was in existence. Very interestingly though, I did submit a foil to try and get all variances. And I did not see besides the, the all these has a sign variance. On the other properties do not have sign variances. Their Uno's got a variance at a different time about, about signage and coloring, but it was not about the number of signs. So unfortunately, from my search, besides all these, I could not find other variances for the signage. So it might have been part of the original approval for this prop, for the shopping plaza as a whole. Because I know Uno's and Friday's was all originally in that construction.
Okay.
And that also could be that they were put up illegally and shouldn't be there. I don't know if they are, but that's, that's another option too.
That's true.
At this time, I would like to to go back to the site plan rendering. I'll zoom in here to the the building pad. So as previously mentioned, we are requesting a variance from providing five feet of landscaping along the the front of a building. The, the code section states landscape area at least five feet wide abutting in the front of a building. The purpose of the landscaping is to enhance the appearance of the use on the lot, but not to screen the use from view. So as you could see from this rendering, we are providing landscaping around a majority, I would say at least seventy five percent of the the building facade. I believe that our landscaping does enhance enhance the area. You don't just see the building facade. You don't see all of the the ephist finish on the bottom. So we do believe that the landscaping provided does provide a a nice break to the the main building facade. So on the northern side of the building, what is still up for debate whether this is the the front or not. We do provide approximately three feet of landscaping on either side of that the bump out. The bump out, which is the the wood cedar paneling. And then on the western facade, we do provide up to seven and a half feet of landscaping between the the curb line and the main building facade with this small bump out being pretty close to to five feet. So still up for debate whether the western facade is the front entrance. We believe this is where a majority of our our traffic will come from. I I believe most people will will probably pull in and use these spaces. So we anticipate this being the the most used entrance. This northern facade doesn't have an entrance. It's really just a, an open window that shows the the dining room. And then there is another entrance on the eastern facade next to the the drive-through window.
So Matthew, if there's no entrance there, what is to prevent the, regardless of whether or not we we determine that that's the front of the building? If there's no entrance there and let's assume that it is the front of the building, what's to, wh- why is it a problem to put the five feet of landscaping there? You don't need it for for entrance and egress, correct?
Correct. We don't need it for entrance and egress. But I will touch on why we, we don't feel that we could provide the five feet. So if we were to provide an additional five feet of of landscaping in here, you are pushing the the back of the building back pretty close to the, the radius, the of the the curb line on the inner side of the drive-through lanes. You're also squeezing some of this menu board equipment pretty close to the the curb line and the the cars using that drive-through. I just, I I feel that you're going to put this corner of the building pretty close to that drive-through lane. And it's a situation that that Popeyes and me as an engineer would typically try to to avoid. If we had some additional space here, we would be, we would be willing to slide everything driveway included. Or I'm sorry, drive-through lanes included further to the south, but we only have approximately four and a half feet before the the main drive aisle. So we would like to keep this buffer, this space to provide adequate separation between the the bypass lane and the main drive aisle.
If I may add to that. The other thing is that we have the accessible ramp back down to the ADA parking on the main entrance side of the building. There is a door on that drive-through side of the building. We need that walkway across the front of the building to access it from that door back out to the ADA accessible area. So if we don't move the building, we can't put the landscaping there because we need to maintain an ADA exterior ADA pathway.
Where, where is the ADA?
Well, the ADA stall is here.
Oh, I see, I see it now. Yeah, it was.
And so you'd be walking out of this, the door on the, we're calling that the eastern side, going towards the north, coming down to the western side. And then you get down to, to be able to access towards there. But either way, whether it's going to the ADA parking spot or just we, we still need our means of egresses to be ADA accessible. And so to get down to that ramped area, if we put landscaping in the front of that window area, we would no longer have an accessible area to access.
Right, even though there's no ingress or regress there.
Again, it's on the other side of the building and we're using that area to get from one side to the other across the front of that.
Okay.
And you're saying you can't just make that sidewalk on the opposite side of the building contain a ramp as well?
We are, we are limited on space. I mean, a a curb ramp here would take up really six to seven feet. You would potentially lose your space to to circulate around that curb ramp. So we, we are just kind of running out of space in this general area.
And from the standpoint of ADA, now you're putting the people on the other side of the building out into the street sooner than they had to be. Since you're developing this, they would prefer that you develop it so that no matter which entrance they were exiting from, the point that they leave the sidewalk and enter into the drive to get to the handicap spots are are more similar. So at least this way there, have the safety of the curve and the sidewalk for a longer period.
I, I, I have a question. Has the planning board weighed in on this to to what extent? In terms of, you know, the basic site plan that you're proposing here?
Drew, do you wanna answer that or?
Um, I was not at the the last planning board meeting, but we have presented it to the planning board. You know, and went through all these same points. I do not believe that they objected. Their concern is about traffic. Just to ensure the traffic over the entire site works. So we're working on that. I don't believe they, they did ask as well about the five foot, about, about the five foot landscaping and why we couldn't do it. And we explained to them about the ADA accessibility. I, but they did not have any concerns after we explained it. Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that was exactly it. And then they said that we were, we were free to come to the zoning board and to get the interpretation from the building inspector with regards to that variance, which we attempted to do.
Okay, so so I'll make some comments here. On the left-hand side of the rendering that you're you're showing right now. Is there a particular reason why the handicap spot isn't near that ramp? To the left immediately, there's existing parking, which I presume is gonna remain. So take your cursor and go to the left there, right? There's what, ten, twenty spaces there? That any, or certainly the ones closest to your handicap ramp would be appropriate for handicap parking as opposed to the description of going all the way across the other side of the building and across what would be two lanes potentially of drive-through.
I, I understand the the concern. There is an inlet located right here. We typically don't put an access aisle in the location that there is a an inlet grate. The, the, the grating in this area great drains down towards that inlet. It's also an older asphalt area with us redoing the asphalt in here. We felt that we could make this area ADA compliant and ensure that we are in compliance with the ADA standards. So that was our, our intention here.
Okay, I I understand what you're saying, but but to me, if I'm looking at it as a handicap person. I want the shortest distance possible between your um handicapped entrance. If I'm in a wheelchair and my handicap parking spot, you're not accomplishing that. So.
I I would beg to differ. Uh, if we did. Uh, put the ADA stalls in this location, your access aisle would be um really this this stall right here. Or this location right here. Um, so I would say that it's probably equidistant to get from um this access aisle. To this landing area as it would uh to cross here.
So maybe I'm I'm mistaken in what I'm looking at is is the ADA accessible entrance. At the bottom of the picture here or at the top?
Both entrances are accessible.
Both entrances are accessible.
By by ADA code, uh you need to provide two thirds uh of entrances.
Okay.
Be accessible, and we would never design a a brand new sidewalk um at greater than um one and a half or two percent. Uh, outside of a a building, so.
Okay.
So both the bottom and the top are ADA accessible. So, so if it. Wh- what we were talking about is the is the need for the person to walk around. To walk around the building and walk through the front of the building. I I I, if it's ADA accessible, why do we need to now do that? I I I, maybe I misunderstood. Why do we need to walk around the building?
So exits, not just entrances, but it's an, it's an exit uh item as well. Uh, pedestrians need to be able to exit uh a development. Um, so if somebody chooses to use this exit. Um, in case of an emergency, and maybe they have to use this exit. Then this would need to be ADA compliant, and it will be. And I mean, really, if you had a a break in the sidewalk here with just um landscaping. I think it it eliminates really the the circulation uh path from. I mean, somebody that was decided to, and this is a a hypothetical. Somebody that decided to use the the Coke machine on this side of the building, and then they went out this entrance. Um, they would have to walk through the the drive aisle to get to their car potentially parked over here. So providing this this sidewalk is not. It it's not crazy. It it's typical and it's um, it's really in line with with most developments, almost any development. Uh, connecting the entrances, connecting the exits. You you need pedestrian circulation um around around uses such as this.
Is it also wheelchair accessible? The side, the the left side there, sidewalk looks very narrow there.
It it's five feet, uh which is compliant.
Okay.
Hey Matthew, what's the distance from the the end of the five feet to where the dotted line is? Um, it where, you know, where you're parking and driveway. What is that distance? Do you, do you know that? Yeah, that dark gray area.
This right here?
Yep.
I would say it's probably two to three feet.
And would it be very difficult to push this whole building back two to three feet to get the five feet of sidewalk that you want? And the five feet of uh um landscaping that the code is asking for?
I I'm sorry, push the building back to the right?
Yep.
To to then provide five feet of landscaping right here?
Yeah, so if you take two and a half feet from the front and two and a half feet from the back, you can have both your five foot sidewalk. And the five foot landscaping, is that, is that a possibility? Cause you were talking about pushing it back. You don't wanna get too close to that, you know, drive through lane. If you took a little bit off the front and a little bit off the back, is that something that might work?
So twenty-five feet is really a a typical drive aisle width. Um, especially in a. I I guess a a high turnover or um a use that has lots of cars uh coming in using the the drive through. Um, you really don't wanna go uh any smaller than twenty-five feet in a drive aisle. Uh, this drive aisle width also connects to the the existing drive aisle. Um, further to the the east in the development. So twenty-five feet is um a typical drive aisle width. And it it's consistent with the the development. Um, so we wouldn't be able to take any. Any of the width from this drive aisle. Uh, so really it would all have to come from the back. Um, and that's where we, I had mentioned before, you start squeezing the the menu boards, the ordering equipment. Um, you lose landscaping back here, uh and you put the the back corner of the building uh pretty close to that. That drive through lane, which we typically try like to avoid. Hope that answered your question.
I'm just trying to figure out a way where we get, you know, we can maybe have both the five feet that you that you need for walkway and the five feet that. You know, the 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 code calls for landscape.
So.
The front of the, that's, as we haven't determined as the front of the building.
Correct, that's, I was muted. What, yeah, we have to determine which.
They basically pretty much meet the five feet.
Except, yeah, except on the left side where they need. Except to the left of the entrance.
Correct. But if this part. You know, where the arrow going in with the car's numbered, if that's facing Route thirty-two.
It's not, it's not, that's not facing Route thirty-two.
Seventeen.
It it's seventeen thirty-two.
Yeah.
But the the address is Center Drive, which essentially you could consider this a corner property. It's at. Um, the address is whatever is thirty-two, Center Drive.
The the Center Drive is not a town road.
No. I know, I think.
If that's a mailing address, then it has to be a villager town road, right?
No.
It could be, it could be private.
Yeah, but I'll I'll actually check on that right now and see if it's a um a village road. I I don't think it is, but.
Private people.
But he.
So would Center Drive be considered the the? You know, comes around the front.
Well, the thing is that Center Drive curves right there, so essentially it's almost like a corner property.
Well, we shouldn't be considering Center Drive. We should be considering thirty-two now.
We're seventeen there.
I I think we're wondering, Andrew. I don't know that we know the answer.
Because uh Route thirty-two, in my mind's eye, is almost exactly parallel to that one wall where the Popeye sign is.
Correct, absolutely. There there's no doubt that it is, it by, for all intents and purposes, that. Left side in what we're looking at is essentially parallel to seventeen thirty-two.
So I I brought up an aerial overlay exhibit. Um, this is also dated one twelve twenty twenty-two. Uh, it's the the site plan rendering, um, the colorized version that's overlaid on the the base aerial exhibit. So you can see the orientation of the the proposed building, the proposed use uh with the surrounding roadway network.
Um, your Village Highway Superintendent says that Center Drive is a private road.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it does come across the the property. The property line is on the opposite side of Center Drive from the use, from the Popeyes use.
I don't know what what. Uh, I'm kinda, you know, mixed feelings. I'm with you, Karen, that essentially if we treat the bottom. Facade, if you will, of this view as the front. You're essentially in compliance with the five feet for, yeah, yeah. If you want, and if the variance is required there, it's minimal. Um, if we're going to require the front of the building facing thirty-two. Um, then it's it's a different variance, but if you consider the other. Consider the current, who knows, there's really no landscaping. It's very similar to this. At the present time, there's not much landscaping on that because they have a, they actually have their main entrance. Where that, where that window is and is gonna be and um. So it's it's a broad walkway, it's curb cut, handicap accessible, et cetera. Um, so there's no landscaping there.
And I would just like to point out, you have those two large um main shopping buildings. Um, one also faces seventeen, but then the other one faces Center Drive, Center Drive. It's, I don't know, Matt, if you could pull up the big. Yeah, in the front of that building, um where Matt, if you move your mouse up a little. Nope, other building, that one, the front of that building, you know, should reasonably be deemed to be where exactly where Matt's mouse is. You know, you wouldn't say the front of the building is the side that faces seventeen, cause that, you're not gonna have landscaping there. It wouldn't make sense to have landscaping there. You're gonna do it where the front entrance is. And I do know that the um planning board. Determined that the Modell's application that's going in. Um, they don't have the landscaping, but it was deemed a legal non-conforming use. So they will continue to not have landscaping, cause neither of those buildings have any landscaping in the front.
But this affects your application uniquely because you're a standalone building. Have, you don't have those. Uh, you you know, courtesies from from the pre-existing site.
Essentially, this, the Modell's applique or the replacement for Modell's. That's essentially right about where the the cursor is, is effectively part of a strip mall. You can't, there there is no landscaping there whatsoever. And uh I would would argue or suggest that that was probably um approved in the initial. Initial application before the planning board, however many years ago that was. Um, but the standalone nature of these buildings, and if you look at other. Um, fast food restaurants in the area, they still have been asked to meet. That five yard or five foot requirement from a landscaping perspective. For example, if you look at the uh the Wendy's across in uh by Walmart. Uh, that they have, they've done that, and they have their sidewalk and ADA accessibility. But they still have landscaping actually in between the building and um. The sidewalk, so it's it's a different scenario because of, because of the, I think the unique situation. You're trying to squeeze this double drive through into this space. That you're constricted in a lot of ways. So, all of that being said, I think if we. Can we choose Kelly to treat the, what is effectively the south and west facade? That we're looking at at the bottom of the picture and declare that the front? For the purposes of the landscaping because discussion?
Uh, so it is an interpretation that has to be made by this board. It is obviously presidential. Um, and I think you'll be having several of these applications come in. With the shops at Woodbury Development across the road. So just to keep that in mind, so long as. I I mean, it's the board's determination when you review the code, what you think the front of the building is for purposes of this landscaping. That's supposed to be done to, to have the landscaping, to enhance the appearance of the use. Not necessarily screen it, but to enhance the appearance, and they are requesting a variance. To have none to one point eight feet. So it's up to this board.
You know, I just looked at uh with his other map, I looked at uh Dunkin' Donuts, and that building's not that old. But I don't see no, I don't see no plantings. On, on the front, if 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 the front is facing thirty-two or seventeen. Uh, if you look at. Uh, Dunkin' from the aerial. I didn't see no plantings.
Where's Dunkin' on the aerial?
Dunkin' is is directly left of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right here.
So that building's not even that old.
Well, and and you have to consider the fact that because of the the terrain there. You basically can't see that Dunkin' Donuts from seventeen thirty-two, right? It sits down in almost a hollow, and it would, I I would hazard a guess that they treated. The right side of the Dunkin' as the front. Right, because. There there, I believe there are some plantings um to the right and left of where the canopy is, but I I don't know specifically.
And TGI Fridays, I don't see nothing facing the the front of the building either, which.
Well, again, i- i- it's, what are we declaring? Did they declare the front of the building to be um the south side effectively, southwest side? Because they do have plantings there.
Well, we're, we're trying to declare the front of the building that that faces.
Well, I think that's what we're discussing, right? And and the the applicants. The applicants requesting that we declare the front of the building to be the southwest side, the bottom of. Where the the one of the two entrances is. And and to do most of their landscaping there.
I'm okay with that.
Does anybody have any concerns with the fact that the left side of the building technically is the front? If we were to declare the. The front?
I have concerns with that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Be- because of the precedent that we could possibly set, I have concerns with that. Um, I think it's something that we need to analyze. A- and make sure it's not something that's gonna be detrimental to the future.
Would Popeyes consider getting rid of one of the drive-throughs? Do you need two drive-throughs?
I was, I'm sorry, that, go ahead.
Uh, Rob was probably gonna say exactly what I'm gonna say, but um I think COVID and the pan- pandemic have taught us. That drive through is absolutely necessary. One, most fast food developments are going to this two-drive-through uh model. Uh, almost none of them are ever proposing one drive-through anymore. Um, this is the the new age. Uh, Popeyes does need um the two different drive-through lanes. Uh, it helps to speed up time on processing orders uh to pick up. So, yeah, I I would say that that two drive-through lanes is um is the way to go, and I don't believe they would consider um just going with one.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Matthew, uh, uh, I completely understand. I mean, that's, any drive-through you see nowadays has a queue thirty, forty cars long. So I totally understand. Is there a way that we could take a couple of feet from the back buffer? And move the building back a couple of feet to at least get us closer? So that you would be requesting, say, a smaller variance. Uh, maybe we could put, if we were determined. That the 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 left side of what we're looking at is in fact the front of the building. And you took a foot and a half from the back buffer and moved the building back towards the drive-through a foot and a half. I- is there, is there a possibility that those three feet could get us a a better uh a front. Uh, landscaping coverage where we where we would solve both issues?
I think the corner of the building would be too close to the curb, though.
I I would say we can, we can probably shift the building back two feet or so to provide. Uh, a two-foot mulched area with with landscape shrubs. Uh, we can probably do that. I don't think I can give you the full five feet. Or else uh you would run into the issues that I had mentioned earlier.
So you can get, you can, you can look at maybe shifting the building two feet, but what if you were to shift that whole now? Give us another foot and a half on that four point four feet on the back end buffer. So shift the whole thing, and then let's, let's get to, you know, four feet. And this way the variance would be requesting along the front of the building, let's say. You could still have a five foot walkway and perhaps a three and a half, four foot landscaped area. Where we could maybe solve both uh goals.
So I I definitely understand the concern, um and I I wanna work with you there. I I think four point four feet is. I, I think four point four feet is. It's a, a buffer that I would like to, to maintain. Um, if you have vehicles traveling. Uh, in the, the downward direction to the east, um, they're gonna be on this side along this curb line. And you're going to have uh, vehicles potentially traveling in the bypass lane, uh, going the opposite direction. So I think uh, the, as wide a buffer as we can provide, uh, we would like to do so. So I would, I would refrain from taking any of the, the width from this buffer. Uh, but we can, we can certainly consider uh, shifting this building back to two and a half feet. To provide enough landscape space where you can fit shrubs, you can fit small shrubs. Um, and it would be, I would say, two and a half feet in the front here, but I think you would be pretty close to getting your full five feet. Uh, on these, these side bump outs. Um, so if that's something that the, the board would, would accept, I, I believe we can, we can comply with that or comply with that request.
Will you be able to have a rendering or something of that? For, for another, for the next meeting?
Sure, I mean, it, it wouldn't look much different than this, you would see a couple of, of green shrubs just right in this area. And I, I don't know if I. Am I legally allowed to draw on this exhibit and show you what I would, what I would do?
Matthew, we have hard copies of your uh, initial exhibit, so for demonstration purposes, it's like you're on an easel with a pen. But Kelly, any, any problem with that?
I don't have a problem with that, no. It's being recorded as well, so it will be up on the Village's um webpage.
I'm just gonna do this real quick, so. That area, and we can even change it to, to green. Um, so that would become landscaping, um, you would have some additional space. Here as well, and this might not be the greatest representation, but doing what I, I can quickly.
You would have to redo these plans to go back to the planning board anyway, correct? You, you, you need to go back to the planning board for more.
That's correct.
Yeah, and we would just need, I think the board would need the, the measurements so that you would know exactly what variances you'd be granting. And I see that you're, you're drawing it now, and I don't know if you have that program that. Does the measuring for you on the CAD drawing, I don't know.
Are you taking the bushes away from the back and just putting them in the front?
No, we would keep the bushes in the back. Just shift them over slightly, so. Again, this is, this is really rough. Um, obviously, we would revise our plans, but. We would push the building back, and I didn't necessarily measure this, but. Um, just a rough representation, these green rectangular areas would become landscaping. Uh, you would, you would get your five feet here on these bump outs, approximately two and a half feet here uh, in front. Uh, and then you would, you would lose some of um, the landscaping area in the back, but we could shift the shrubs and still maintain them. Um, without getting too close to the ordering equipment, um, and the, the curb line there.
How much, did you say in the, in the green area again, for the landscaping, how much would that be? You know, approximately.
I'd be, I would say two and a half feet.
So the middle part count is two and a half feet deep, and then the two extra parts as a result of moving that building. In those two extra parts, you'd get the five feet on the corners that you'd need. And then, you know, if the, if the board decided we could uh, grant a variance for two and a half feet. Uh, in- instead of, you know, almost no, again, the ethos of, of, of the, of the. Uh, is to beautify the, you know, make the front of the, of the building. Look better, not to conceal it, so in, in, in two and a half feet, you could put shrubs, you could put plants, you could do landscaping there that would improve. If that is determined to be the front, you know, the front facade of the building.
That look better to you, Andrew?
Uh, I, 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 I think, I mean, for me personally, I think, I think it's a smart, yes.
So I guess what we're looking for. Well, we've got the wall areas, right, on this uh, sheet number five. Number five has the wall areas, so we can calculate for ourselves the sign. You know, sizes to ten percent. If we leave the uh, left side as the front. They would still need a variance for the five-foot buffer. And if we agree to put the front as the main entrance. They'd still need a variance because the left side doesn't have. The five feet, so either, either way, they would need a variance for the landscaping.
But it's our, it's our job to approve the minimum.
Right, exactly, no, no, I'm just giving the, what the options are, I mean, I'm.
What about all that grass over there? Why can't they put shrubs over there? So this cold green area over here.
Well, no, that's probably part of the twenty-five feet that's required from the front, and then. You need, my understanding is you need five feet that abuts the front, so it has to actually touch the front of your building, Kevin.
Me personally, I think that's ridiculous, but go ahead. Junkyard for all kinds of crap that people throw in.
Unfortunately, the code does say five feet abutting the front of the building. But I, I don't take any credit for writing it, I don't know who did.
So the side, the wall area doesn't matter, you did, you did the smaller sizes. You didn't do the bump outs when you calculated the sign area, is that correct?
So, and I can bring up the, the architectural. Again, and while I'm at it, I might as well keep drawing. So this was the area that we calculated for the seal. And the same goes for the, the front, uh, the channel letters here.
Okay, so you weren't including the, the little port, that white portion. If you stare at the Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen signage, you're not including the, the white on the left and the right.
This, nope, no, that's not included, and just like this facade area is not. Correct.
Okay, I just want, I wanted to be clear on that. And it appears that you have, you have gooseb- goose neck lighting up at the top, is there lighting under those awnings? It looks like there is.
Yes, there is, there's outfit lighting.
And the perimeter, you, you, when you drew the landscaping before, besides the part that abuts the building, you had um, perimeter landscaping. Um, is that existing, or is that something you plan to put in?
Uh, what areas?
Um, well, first of all, the trees in the corners there, or bushes or whatever those are.
These five trees are proposed.
Okay, proposed, and, and the um, part by the drive-through, yeah, that area.
Around the trash enclosure is proposed. Yep, and around the building, this is all proposed, uh, within this island here, this is proposed.
Proposed, right, even the green that's on the, on the right, that's not there, that.
Correct, all of this within this pad is all going to be there.
Those trees gonna be tall enough to, not to block view?
Yeah, they'll be consistent with the, the other um. Yet, so this is.
You're looking at the top, Kevin, the trucks are skinny.
No, I'm talking about. Out of Walmart. You got all that crap in here, you can't even see anybody coming.
We, we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't wanna obstruct our, our view of our, our development. Um, they're gonna be consistent with the other trees within the, the, the parking lot, uh, on a landscaped island, similar to what's over here. Um, this is just a graphical representation of a, a potential.
I was just talking about the height, so that, you know, you're not looking through the tree, only the trunk.
Um, no, we're, we're confident in the, the species type that we are proposing, that, that it'll be okay in this situation.
And I see there's an enter sign there, should there be an enter sign up there by those trees? See up on top, up?
No, it, it actually says do not enter, um, so. And because this is a, a color, a colorized version of our site plan and our landscaping plan. The, the landscaping portion covers that, but on our base site plan and the site plan set, you could see it says do not enter.
That, that explains it.
Good catch, though, Kevin. Looking out for safety.
Well, you know me, I've always been safety.
Anybody else have any comments or questions before I open it up to the public? We can't close the public hearing tonight because we don't have a two thirty-nine back from the county, so. We don't need to make big decisions. At this time. Nobody have anything else?
I'm good for it.
Okay, um, so I'll open it up to the public, is, um, do you have a? Can you see what's there, Kelly, to see if anybody wishes to speak to this application?
I can.
Kelly, this is Maria Hunter.
Hi, Maria.
I would like to speak if I may.
Go ahead.
Maria Hunter, resident of Woodbury, I'm pro-business, so I think this is a beautiful rendition of this proposed. Popeyes, um, the landscaping looks great, and as I put in the chat before. Whether it's the side, the front, the back, that whole building is considered twenty-center drive, cuz that's how we did it when we did the E nine-one addressing. So whether you pick a front side or whatever side of the building, it's twenty-center drive, no matter what. Um, the landscaping, I'm pretty cool with what's proposed right now, if they do the two and a half extra feet. As Kevin mentioned before, when it comes to uh. Consumers, they don't care if there's landscaping or not, cuz they will throw their debris in there. And um, two variances, whether it's for the landscaping and for the signage. As you know, notice, most of the stores over on Larkin Drive, they have signages on all four sides of the building, cuz it's corporate. And the signings that they're putting here at the two. Excuse me? I'm, someone asked me something? Okay, so with the signage that says Popeyes and the two round medallions on the side. I don't see that is intrusive to the area, and to have that love that chicken, I think it's awesome, the whole design of that building looks great. It's a bloom to Woodbury, and that whole section from the five pointed trees. It looks like that's the whole section of where the old Uno's is, so it's a smaller building. And it's gonna look great, so those are the two variances, are the landscaping and the signage, if I'm correct, right? There's nothing else that this board needs to address?
At this time, that, well, we just needed the interpretation for the front.
I just wanted to confirm that there's three variances, um, one is landscaping, one is for the number of signs, and then one is for that.
Ten percent, uh, yes.
Four tenths of a square foot.
Okay, well, from prior experiences with corporate signage on buildings. Whatever corporate needed, and Kelly, this is your predecessor. Corporate signage takes precedent, and the, the boards, whether it's ZBA or planning board, should take that consideration, and if this is. What's required by Popeyes, as a resident and as a. Business owner in Woodbury, I think this should go, and I think this board should really take a look into that, and. We need to have businesses to survive in this, in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Anyone else from the public?
If they have comments, they have the ability to mute themselves and say that they have comments, or they can raise their hand.
I still have the shared screen, so I don't see.
Yeah, Matt, could you take your screen down?
Okay, so there's no one else from the public who wishes to speak to this application? Anybody from the board have any last minute questions? Or the, from the uh. Applicant, anything you'd like to say before we, you know, move to carry this over to the next uh, month?
I'll make a motion to keep the public comment open and carry it over in the next meeting.
Have a second? All in favor? Okay, so we'll see you next month. Um, hopefully by then we'll get our two thirty-nine and we'll have a better idea when we look at all the wall measurements and signs and. Possibly we need, giving us a rendition of the moving of the, moving back the uh, building. Now, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, I just wanted to clarify, the only thing that the, this board is looking for us to resubmit is a rendition. Um, as Matt pointed out, with the two and a half feet in front, are there any other documents that we need to submit for the next meeting? Um, to clarify any points discussed tonight?
Um, we have the wall measurements, so we can do the signage there. And we just need whatever, when you do that rendition, make sure you have the width of the landscaping. You know, all around there, so we can make the determination on that. Is that it, Kelly? I think that's all that we need, right?
That's it, and Drew, if the two thirty-nine comes in, when I get it from the building department, I'll forward it to you.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty, we voted, right? Alrighty, so we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And next on the uh, agenda, we have NMJ Caesar P E Choi. Public hearing requesting variances for the construction of a single-family residence. Whereas pursuant to section three ten dash seven, properties in the R two A district are required to have a minimum lot width of one hundred seventy-five feet. And pursuant to section three ten dash twelve, properties in the R two A district are required to have a minimum street frontage of one hundred feet. The application proposes a minimum lot width of fifty feet and eighty-one point seventy-five feet of street frontage. Said property is located in the R two A zoning district at three seventy-two Route thirty-two in Central Valley. And is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section two one eight, block one, lot forty-two point two. Is the applicant present?
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Nick Caesar, I'm here to discuss this project, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you. This is an interesting piece of property. Um, so you are the applicant, however, the owners are Andrew and James Choi, correct?
Correct, James Choi is on the call here.
And we have a, a letter to that effect somewhere here dated uh. December ninth, that gives you the authority to act on every half. So you, there was a building permit that was put in for the house and a barn, but the application here is just for the house.
The barn is for all intents and purposes an accessory structure, so uh. I don't know if the building department didn't refer to it correctly, but it's for both structures.
Okay, so.
I mean, both structures are represented on the proposed site plan.
Right, I see, yeah, I saw that. So that, this to me. Is one of those crazy zone, you know, pieces of property with the zoning code. So on the Route thirty-two side, you have eighty-two, eighty-one point seventy-five feet of frontage. And then when you take that unpaved road back to where the house is. There's a, there's a lot more frontage, and it's a lot more, the width of the property is much greater, correct?
Correct, yeah, so it, it, um, as the engineer for this project, it's definitely up to interpretation regarding like. What's the front, what's the back, um, just the orientation of the lot is clearly irregular. And it, it bottlenecks in towards that. Existing driveway from eighty-one point seventy-five feet down to fifty feet, but then it opens up, you know. And, you know, I, I mean, the, the rear width of the property is like six hundred and thirty feet, so it's like. A very irregular property, but for, but the, the, you know, the, the property is fifteen acres, so. You know, the majority of the property is a wetland, um, we had the wetland redelineated in October. And uh, then we got it resuraveled, so the, the current wetland location that's displayed is the most accurate as per the New York State D E C. the most accurate as per the New York State DEC. So there's, there's a large swath of area that is realistically developed, that, that could be developed, just that obviously this is restricted by the zoning code.
So basically, the fifty feet is that, that narrow portion from Route thirty-two?
Yes, correct.
And then when you, obviously you get back to the back of the property, it's much larger.
So if, would I be able to share my screen real quick, I could just do a quick.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you see Google Maps at this point?
Uh, yep, I see it now.
Okay, so, um, here's a quick overview of the property, this is Route thirty-two down here. Um, this yellow dotted line represents the property boundary, so this area back here, these dotted lines represent a, a, a delineated wetland, so just showing you quickly on Google Maps, um, the, the right side of the property is actually a railroad, and the property extends along this, um, tree line, um, kind of over here, all the way back. Um, so there's really no neighbors on this side, no neighbors on this side. And this side is slightly developed because it kind of borders Route thirty-two, but there is a significant, um, plantation buffer between these two properties, so when you're actually standing back here on these properties, um, during, you know, eight or nine months out of the year, you actually can't see Route thirty-two, and you can't see any of these buildings. Um, there is actually one building that's also equally as an irregular lot right here. Um, I don't particularly think that, which, that's actually this lot right here. It's like a triangular and semi-circle, you know, pie-shaped lot that, that doesn't, this also doesn't meet any of the zoning requirements, I'm sure it was very, it was built a while ago. But, uh.
So, so you're saying that the, as far as the wetlands, you can't build back there, so that's why you've placed the house in the barn? Um, where it is now?
Yes, correct, so if you look here on the existing site plan, um, this is the wetlands here. Um, the property setbacks are shown by basically this, this, uh, dotted line here. And the buildable area is the difference between this green line, which is a hundred foot setback from the wetlands, and this, obviously the municipal setbacks here. So the buildable area is basically this area right here, um, which is a substantial amount of area. But it's obviously constrained by this bottlenecking entrance here. But a key point that I was trying to make is, uh, that, you know, if you, if there was a house nested back here, you wouldn't be able to see it from Route thirty-two because of the tree coverage. And, you know, um, from these properties here, you actually wouldn't really be able to see it very directly, because there's just a significant amount of trees that buffer it, you know, it's kind of a nested in nook, um, with the wetlands on one side and a bunch of trees on the other, but it is a very unique lot. And, uh, the property owner is very interested in, you know, um, putting a house there that he can, uh, do some farming and stuff like that on. So that's, it's a pretty simple scenario, the two limitations here, as I just wanted to clarify, are the street frontage, which is right here, which is eighty-one point seventy-five feet. And then the slot width here gets constricted down to fifty feet here.
Alright.
So if there's any other questions, uh, I could answer anything regarding, um, sewer and water hookups, the, uh, this is an overlay that I perceived from the municipal engineer consultants, which suggests that the property is within the sewer district, but not within the water district. So as a result of that, this would likely involve a municipal sewer connection, which is likely on thirty-two. And then it could involve a, a well. Um, and I just showed here, just, this is theoretical, obviously, pending building department approval that a well could be situated on this site with sufficient space, um, with a two hundred foot radius. Um, that would obviously have to get approved via the building department, um, as long as, as well as the additional um, plans for the house and the accessory structure. And then just some quick site photos here. This is a photo from thirty-two looking into the property, this is that constricting, um, driveway access, there's an existing road there, and, uh, it's been there for a while.
A long while.
Yeah, so that's, that's actually a ro, this photo is looking from this point here, this way. Um, and the driveway comes around here, and um, this is a photo looking from the center of the property towards the corner, so this is looking from around right here, looking this way. And these are just two other photos looking at the other directions, this is looking towards the wetland, so this whole area here is a wetland, the house would be proposed here. As I mentioned, you can barely even see any other developments, and what's these trees are, you know, this is that whole tree line that I'm talking about, it basically shades the entire area. Especially during the not winter months, but. I guess I'll open it up for.
Yeah, anybody from the board have anything they need to ask?
Nick or James, or how long have you owned this property? How long has the current owner owned this property?
Yeah, about four years. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
So yeah, about four years. And then for the past four years, I, uh, I planted some, uh, fruit trees, and then also, I, uh, I made some garden vegetable gar, vegetable gardens there, but, uh, there was no water, electricity, so it was pretty tough to work on the, uh, vegetable garden.
Yeah, just a little context too, I don't necessarily know, you know, the, the applicability of this, but this particular lot was part of a s, a larger subdivision that was approved in twenty fourteen, um, which was owned by, I believe, this individual down here. So just as a contextual point here, is that this lot was part of an approved subdivision that then provided a lot that was unbuildable. Um, and then the current property owner purchased the lot under the assumption that it was buildable, but clearly it doesn't fit the zoning requirements, so just to context.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Nick, why would the current owner buy it under the assumption that it was buildable if it was subdivided under the assumption that it would not be buildable?
Uh, what's the question exactly?
I guess it.
It was. Why, you're, you're saying that the owner bought it thinking that it was buildable?
But you said. It was conveyed to the current owner that this was a buildable lot, but it's not a buildable lot.
From the previous owner, the person that had it subdivided?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, long time ago, the Mr. So, the neighbor, he used to own this property, and then the other property as well, and then he planned to develop some spa or spas, largest spa using, uh, this area, but, uh, but, uh, uh, he gave up because, uh, he, uh, lose all the monies, and then, and then, uh, he, uh, he exhausted, so this land abandoned maybe more than ten years.
And I just mentioned that in, 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 in a context, and that this part, this particular lot was part of, uh, I don't know, several lot subdivisions, so that was the previous.
It used to be two lots, one lot and the other lot.
Yeah, the other lot was subdivided, and I believe the building.
The other lot is subdivided to two parcels right now, and one, one that, uh, the, the neighbor's land, one that is for the multifamily house, and the other lot, they, uh, they beat a new, new house using the pre-chasing, uh, pre-chasing garage.
Right.
Are they built already, or?
Yeah, oh, they, they almost, almost done, maybe, uh, next to, I mean, during the spring, here we get the palm, we'll see.
So that's these, that's these buildings over here.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I just offer that as a contextual point, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that road on thirty-two there, that, that was dope.
Wait, this, this, I would just went back to my notes from that twenty, uh, fourteen, it was called, I just want to clear up the record, it was called In One Song, and it was a two lot subdivision, and it created lots fourteen point one and fourteen point two, it did not involve this parcel forty-two point two. So this was not a parcel. Right, this is. A, above it, yeah, on the tax map, yes. This wasn't one that was created by the planning board, not in conformance with your code in twenty fourteen.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
That was, that was done, this all was done thirty years ago on.
Yeah, the, I think this one was much, much prior, because the board knows the planning board wouldn't have been able to do that, they wouldn't have been able to subdivide to create that, so. Sorry, I was just taking a minute to look at the old files.
Oh, yeah, I do, I, I mean, I needed some clarification, because I have some subdivision maps from twenty fourteen, and this, this lot was the primary, um, depiction of the subdivision maps, so my assumption was that, I didn't look into it, but so I, I guess there's two subdivision down here, and this is an adjacent lot owned by the same property owner.
Yeah, owned, it's owned by the same guy.
Okay.
So you, James, you bought this lot four years ago from In One Song?
Yes. Because he, uh, he exhausted, and then, uh, he moved to South Carolina, giving up. And then, uh, now he get, uh, gets down, and then he, uh, be the his house.
Okay. Well, what do we think of this, people? We've got a huge lot, which, if you didn't have that narrow section by thirty-two, would be considered a buildable lot, but because it's got that paved, unpaved road, it's only fifty foot wide with eighty-one point seventy-five feet of frontage, it doesn't comply with the code.
Quite honestly, we just, I think we just basically did this on Smithville Road.
Did he? Yes.
You know, it's almost exactly the same.
It's, it's strikingly similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I planted here, I planted to the, some organic lavender farm, small lavender farm.
My wife will be there when you open.
So just a couple of quick comments, I mean, uh, you know, the zoning code, the intent of it is, you know, to preserve the character, you know, for all intents and purposes of the neighborhood. The, the proposed construction here is in keeping with the adjacent properties, it's going to be a modest residential structure. And, you know, the existing lot really like significantly, you know, hinders the view of this construction from both thirty-two and the adjacent properties. So just those two points, um, in addition to the point that, you know, this is a very large lot, and, um, you know, having it go undeveloped, you know, is not in the benefit of the property owner. So just those points I think are, are valuable, you know, I think this tree buffer scenario here, if this tree buffer line wasn't there, I think we would be having a different discussion, but it's, it significantly shields the lot, you know, from thirty-two and the adjacent lots. And, you know, it could be improved additionally as well, so I think those are some key points regarding, you know, the effect of this development on the adjacent parcels, and, uh, yeah, that, that's just my comments that I would offer.
So Nick, what's, what's the plan, is it to, to, to develop a driveway in that fifty foot wide section?
So, uh, just, just to offer some clarity, there is an existing driveway here, it's not paved, but it's like, it's, it's developed, so, I mean, it would be improved slightly. Um, you can see from the photos here, um, this is the road, it's, it's a road, you know, I mean, um, for all intents and purposes, there's, you know, ditches on each side. It's easily passable with the sedan, Mr., Mr. James Choi has a sedan, a Toyota, you know, that he drives on, and all the way to the back, it's a very passable road, so it would be improved slightly, um, regarding the effect on the plan. You know, this road would be improved, and then it would just be improved slightly to provide access to these two buildings. This would be the primary structure here, um, in keeping with the requirements of the code. Um, and this would be an accessory structure, so, you know, these two proposed buildings would be as of right, they would be in conjunction with the zoning, so, um, but just, you know, the lot here is really disgusting, so. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, Nick, thank you.
Absolutely. You know what my real concern is? This property is not that far from the wells. The town wells. Uh, and then he wants, you know, when they're talking about like a farming, uh, I think our aquifer is right underneath this property. So I would be careful with that.
Oh, yeah, sure, I just did here, uh, I just did here, so organic, uh, organic lavender.
You know, you start putting fertilizers and all that stuff.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not going to use your.
I mean, like, like, let me clarify here, this is not going to be a commercial farm, this is going to be a single family residence, so that's.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this, the, the water usages associated with this lot would, would be designed off of a single family residence, not a commercial farming utility, I mean, if an individual decides to, to, to utilize, you know, standard residential farming, then that's, that's that, it's not going to be, you know, an.
Not, not commercial.
Yeah, but once he gets the house up, then he could basically do a lot with that property.
So you worried about the water usage if it's a farming?
I'm not worried about the water usage.
I don't know.
Our wells are not that far away from there.
Yeah, in the future, I'm going to open the, this, this area to the public, because, I mean, after I purchased this house, like this land, the beaver, beaver moved to this area, and then made a beaver pond, it's beautiful. So I saw.
I'd like to, I'd like to know what the water department thinks about it.
Um, I mean, so we're talking now about the aquifer, like, this is a wetland, it's incredibly saturated, the aquifer here is replenished significantly. From a hydrology standpoint, this is literally a wetland.
Kevin, it may be also subject to, um, the water quality overlay district, so certain activities may be restricted, just under zoning based on that.
Yeah, I'm going to comply.
Right, but if he gets, if he gets a variance for us, he just has to go for a building permit.
He just has to go for a building permit, but single family residences are also subject to the water quality overlay district, if this is in fact in there.
I just would like to know, I mean, I just, I mean, I'd like to, you know, like, it's fine to build a house down here, but, and live down there. But I would just be concerned about what goes in the ground for fertilizers or.
Oh, maybe, uh, it's not going to.
I'm not going to do it.
Habby card.
But then if the water gets contaminated, we're all going to suffer.
I mean, like, like, this, this discussion, uh, personally, I think is beyond the scope of this request, so what we're requesting is the permission for a single family.
It's, it's not beyond my scope.
Well, actually, it's, it's, it's not beyond the scope, because you're asking for the variances to construct a single family residence, and the discussion took the turn into this being a farm. So his questions are appropriate, but there may just end up being some, you know, other, other areas of the code that need to be looked into, obviously, it would be conditioned upon any permits that are required. And if, if you have a bigger farm operation, then that would be subject to, you know, ag and markets and things like that, so, Kevin, your, your, your comments were not outside the scope, just based on how the scope was opened by the applicant, but we understand what the request is, and we can go forward from there.
I, I, I did, maybe the, maybe the aquifer is not there, so, but that's why I'd like to just know what, what, uh, water department thinks.
Yeah, and, and I think part of that too is the building department looking at that water quality overlay district map, because that has a lot of the protected, um, streams and corridors and riparian buffers and things like that on it. I just don't know that one off the, off the top of my head to know where this property is in relation on that map to those. Um, but, but the board wouldn't be adopting a decision tonight anyway, so there's time to look into that.
You know, I promise now, I will use a single house without using any chemical.
Yeah, Mr. Choi, w- w- we totally appreciate that, the, the, the problem is variances go with the property, so, you know, if you, if you sold it, uh, six months after, uh, you built it, the, the next person would have the variance, so we just have to, we just have to make sure that we, you know, we, uh, uh, analyze, uh, the, the, the entire application and, and the conversation, so we, we don't think that you would intentionally, please don't misunderstand, we don't think that you would intentionally do anything like that, we just have to look into. You would intentionally, please don't misunderstand. We don't think that you would intentionally do anything like that. We just have to look into all of the. Possibilities.
Yeah, thank you for understanding.
Board have any more questions I'd like to ask? Well, I'll come back to you if you do. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this application?
Oh, we've lost everybody but Chris. Chris, do you have any questions? Comments?
Nope, I'm just here to watch.
Okay, does the board have anything more that they'd like to say? All right, do I have a motion to carry this public hearing over to next month?
I make a motion.
Craig make the motion. You can second it, Kevin.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have to wait for the county to return a form. Before we can make a decision because you. Adjourn Route thirty-two. But. We will meet next month and discuss it further.
Okay. Are you guys submitting the Gmail two thirty-nine or I should be submitting?
It's already submitted. We're just waiting for a response.
Okay, fantastic. Just verify.
It was submitted, but the thirty day time period hasn't passed.
And we haven't.
Yeah, I totally have.
Okay, that's, that's it for there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. See you next month. Next on the agenda is the building inspector's report for which we have none. Deliberate on both public hearings and we have none. We have an adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
I thought we could do that after we adjourn. No? Yes?
For attorney client, you can, but if the board could just stay on once the meeting is adjourned.
Right, that's what I was. Okay.
Very good.
So we'll adjourn. Who made the motion?
Kevin.
And who, did you second it, Craig?
I will.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I go. Okay, everybody, stay here.